The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Waverne City Council. We have the regular meeting of the Waverne City Council held here today, March 11th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. First thing I want on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities committee meeting held February the 26th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. There's no additions from administration tonight?
From council? None tonight. Thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings and notices, no declarations, no proclamations or petitions, no reports of any standing committees on it. I would first like to say that we've, just before we go here, is that we've got a full council here tonight and plus some of our administration, so we've got everything that we need to go forward with our motions. Consent agenda, we have the cash activity report, council receivable, and water treatment plant report. Do have a motion to accept.
Worship, I'll make the motion that the following consent agenda items be approved as presented. Cash activity report for January, the council receivable report December 2023, water treatment plant report February.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none. Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously, and this will be placed on the Waverne City website. Motions. Council payable, please.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that accounts payable be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? Carried unanimously. The next one. Baseline roof reports. Andrew.
Thank you, your worship. So the city owns and operates several buildings throughout the city of Waverne. In an effort to better plan for preventative maintenance, repairs, and future capital costs, $50,000 was allocated within the 2024 budget towards consultation services to complete a baseline roof report for 13 of our facilities. So I've listed them on the report. I won't go through all of them. The completed reports will provide details around current conditions, lifecycle forecasts, repair, renovations, and replacement costs. In addition to the baseline assessment, consultants were also asked to include a fall risk mitigation plan for each facility, as well as a fall protection system requirement for each building. So a request for proposal for consultation services was posted on the City of Waverne bids and tenders portal on February 23rd, 2024, with the closing date of 2:00 p.m. on Friday, March 1st, and we received a total of four proposals. So you see them there. Proponents were requested to present complete proposals outlining assigned teams, relevant experience, project schedules, and proposed fees. All proposals received were to include similar baseline information and allowed the proponent flexibility to propose, sorry, additional or recommended services to be added to the project's scope of work. Through careful review and reference inquiries, it's been established that the bid proposed by EXP Services Incorporated will achieve all expected outcomes of the project. EXP Services specializes in building envelope services and was able to provide a detailed history of similar and relatable experience. The proposed project schedule will have the work and reporting completed prior to the 2025 budget deliberations, and the total cost will fall within the 2024 allocated budget amounts. It's recommended that the baseline roof report assessment for 13 city buildings be awarded to EXP Services Incorporated with their office located in Regina, Saskatchewan, at the amount of $27,772 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that the baseline roof report assessments for the 13 city buildings be awarded to EXP Services Incorporated, located in Regina, in the amount of $27,772 plus applicable taxes.
I'll second that motion, your worship. Discussion.
Thanks, your worship. Director Crowe, thanks for this, and thanks for coming in under budget. That was awesome news. So can you just briefly walk us through what we, so when this document's done, they will do an assessment of the roofs of those 13 facilities in the community, and then from there, it's your team will take that document and then sort of prioritize that into a plan?
Yeah, so basically what will happen is they'll come and inspect all of our facilities, all of our roofs that are listed there. And if you'll recall a report I provided last council meeting with a condition report of two of our facilities, basically they'll tell us expected life cycles of whatever systems we have in place. They'll identify areas where, and actually propose maintenance to be done, certain types of maintenance to be done to prolong life of those areas on different roof sections. And then they'll also help us budget for future replacement costs as well. Once this is done, we'll be able to start planning out our roof replacement program that we currently have in place already, but it'll give us a better idea as to where our priorities are moving forward.
And I see that it is your expectation of the consultants that this work is submitted to you prior to budget deliberations this fall, so.
Yes, yeah. The timeline has them done, I believe, summer, I believe, by June or July of this year. All of our capital costs, the first draft capital costs are required by the end of July, I believe, so our requirement of them was to have things wrapped up so that we can plan for 2025 as soon as we have that document. And then, not only with major replacements, but also preventative maintenance that we can carry out at all of our facilities to prolong some roof sections.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Will they be able to, so we're gonna make a plan regarding repairing of the 13 roofs, probably 13 separate repairs, I'm guessing. They gonna be able to bid on each one of the projects?
No, so they only offer consultant services. In the future, if we wish to, with these specialized projects, a lot of the time we'll hire a consultant to actually manage the project just because they have those specialized, that specialized knowledge that they can hold contractors accountable and stuff like that. But we are solely contracting out this assessment, and then in the future, if we choose to seek out those services, we could reach out to them again for future projects as a consultant, but not as a contractor doing the work.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any further discussion? I just want to say that I know that there's been complaints or criticisms that the different buildings are leaking and such. First off, you have a lot of issues with simply because of the way our winter has wrapped here and ice builds up and we're trying to maintain. But this also shows that we are taking a very, very active role in trying to mitigate any problems. Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. The next one. First Avenue Reconstruction and Rehabilitation RFP.
Thank you. So First Avenue North, Highway 13, between Government Road, Highway 35, and 13th Street, is part of the city's truck route in a major thoroughfare. Over the past 10-plus years, there's been no significant repairs or improvements done, and the service has deteriorated, resulting in significant cracking and potholes. In October 2023, the city applied for government funding through the Urban Highway Connector Program, UHCP, for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of First Avenue from Government Road to 13th Street. In October 2023, the city retained KGS Group to complete a geotechnical investigation along this portion of roadway to assess the subsurface conditions in order to develop a geotechnical and surface design for rehabilitation and/or reconstruction. City Waverne allocated 1.2 million for the 2024 asphalt reconstruction project on First Avenue, which includes the requested UHCP funding. The construction of the project is fully dependent on UHCP funding and is required to be completed by December 2024. The geotechnical design of the roadway will be completely independent from the funding and prior to construction. So on February 5th, a request for proposal for the road reconstruction and rehabilitation design of First Avenue was posted on the city's online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Waverne by February 27th at 4:00 p.m. A total of seven proposals were received. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. All of the proposals met the four requirements, and the full seven bids are listed below. The road reconstruction design RFP included the design and planning for the traffic signal light replacement at the Government Road and First Avenue intersection in an attempt to reduce the number of lane and intersection closures. After careful consideration to strict deadlines set by the UHCP funding allocations, the engineering department decided to separate the traffic signal light design and installation to a separate contract to have it completed before the road construction on First Avenue even begins. The four lowest bidders were asked for alternate pricing with this scope reduction during the bid evaluation period. All North consultants proposed the new lowest bid with the reduction in scope. The new proposed fees, along with their exceptional portfolio of municipal road rehabilitation and highway corridor improvement projects resulted with the highest ranking in the bid evaluation. So it is recommended that the road reconstruction and rehabilitation design of First Avenue be awarded to all North consultants for a reduced price of $39,990, not including taxes.
Do I have a motion, please?
Before I make the motion, your worship, just clarification. In the recommendation portion of your report, it's 39,990?
Yeah.
But in the body, it's 60,483?
Yeah, that's because of the scope reduction we asked all of them for.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. I would move that the road reconstruction rehabilitation design of First Avenue be awarded to all North Consultants Limited for a reduced total of $39,990, not including taxes.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Thanks, worship. Thanks, Jen, for this. So right now, the traffic light in question is at Government Road.
Yeah, and First, yeah.
And First, yeah. Is there still conversations, and I believe there are, I just want to make sure I understand this, about a traffic light at 16th Street?
Yeah, that's completely independent.
Completely separate from this?
Yeah.
But it is still, I guess, to be planned for, correct?
Yes, we're currently applying for, we're going to be applying for funding, yeah.
Yeah, very good. I just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
Yeah.
What?
Thank you. So Jen, this is, we're tendering out for the design of the replacement of the road with the hopes that we get the urban collector funding?
Yeah.
And if not, then we're not sure where we're at, but we'll have the design done already.
Yeah, basically with this design, it kind of gives you the, you know, the sloping on it, how to properly make sure we have drainage on it. We'll do that, full design. It'll tell you know what kind of base to use, everything like that, based on the geotechnical evaluation we've already done. So it'll basically, you know, lay out our curbing gutter, everything for this intersection, and then that will never go to waste because our hopes is eventually we'll get the funding, right? So this design could sit on a shelf free if we didn't get it, but yeah.
You go ahead, Jen.
Thank you, your worship. You know, we put in the application for funding?
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe as to when we might know whether or not we get that funding?
So we will know at the release of the provincial budget, which I believe is coming up here in March, so.
Yeah, March 20th is the provincial.
Yeah, so we're just waiting on the provincial budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Are we expecting to tender out the design of those traffic lights separately, then? Is that what I'm reading here?
Yeah, so we took it out of the scope because traffic lights are pretty specialized, that we would be targeting a different group that would do the traffic lights, and also we could, we'll do that one separately, and then hopefully the traffic lights could actually be done before the paving and everything is done, the intersection by another contractor.
Okay, so that hasn't been, that design hasn't been tendered out yet?
No.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no more discussion? Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. So I should have said at the end, with the passing of this, most of the things that we have to do when we do these plans, it's what you refer to as, Matthew, as shovel-ready, right? You have to have, because that's where government always wants to see shovel-ready plans, and that's why we're proceeding forward with getting plans made a little bit beforehand, just so that we are ready to go when, if government fund, if and when government funding becomes available. Introduction of Bylaws, 2024-3478, the Assessment Role Extension. Laura?
Hi, yes, good evening. The Saskatchewan Assessment Management Agency, SAMA, has not sent our 2024 Assessment Role for the city of Waverne. So once that's received, the process of reviewing the Assessment Role for the preparation of the 2024 tax notices will be passed the required date of April 1st, 2024. An extension date of May 31st, 2024 is requested to ensure that there are no errors or revisions required before applying the 2024 mail rates and processing the tax notices.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, your worship. I could make a motion that bylaw 2024-3478, a bylaw to extend the time required for the completion of the 2024 supplementary Assessment Role be read a first time.
Laura?
Your worship, I'll second that. Discussion.
Mr. Hayes?
Laura, as long as I've been following city council, it seems to come up every year. Is it just Waverne, or is this a, is this a problem across the entire province?
I think quite a few cities have to do it. But yeah, it just kind of depends where we fall on SAMA's timeline. We typically don't receive them till the first week of April, mid-April, so then we will get our notices out, usually within the first week of May to mid-May.
Okay, thanks.
Your worship, Laura, do we know if SAMA does this alphabetically, and if so, could we ask them to reverse that some year?
I could ask them. I don't think so, but.
I was thinking, I was thinking about that, Ryan, is that Abernathy probably gets theirs right away, and Waverne gets the last. Anyway, called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Zoning bylaw amendment.
No, I think we're gonna try for more readings, thank you.
Oh, pardon me. Okay, sorry.
Your worship.
All right, because we have to change bylaw.
I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2024-3478, a bylaw to extend the time required for the completion of the 2024 supplementary Assessment Role be read a second time.
I'll also second that motion.
Discussion. Seeing none. Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2024-3478, a bylaw to extend the time required for completion of the supplementary, 2024 supplementary Assessment Role be given three readings at this meeting.
I will second that motion.
Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2024-3478, a bylaw to extend the time required for the completion of the 2024 supplementary Assessment Role be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that motion.
Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Now, zoning bylaw amendment, 2024-3475. Matthew?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So zoning bylaw amendment, application from Kenjo Holdings has been received, which is requesting that lots 1 through 18, Block 1, Plan 102319107 be rezoned from R3 residential multi-housing to R1 residential detached. So after the council gave first reading at our February 12th, 2024 meeting, public notices went out as per our public notice policy. So advertisements occurred on February 14th and February 21st, additions of the Waverne Review that are posted here at City Hall and also on our city website. Additionally, neighborhood notices were mailed out to all property owners within 75-meter radius of the property. So one response was received from neighboring property was in regards to an infrastructure request. This had nothing to do with the rezoning, so that letter has been provided to council for review. So development proposal, the site is the location of Conwood Project Residential Development. The reason for the amendment is to allow for the development of residential detached dwelling units in keeping with the R1 regulations of zoning bylaw 2020-3412. So there's a map of the subject property. Aerial view of the property show where it is located. It's near T Mike School. So the applicant has a request that the land be rezoned from R1, which is residential detached, or rezoned to R1 residential detached. This is the most restrictive residential area for development of detached dwelling units. It is a principal zone for single-family dwellings, development in suburban areas of the city. The standards in this zone are designed to preserve and protect the suburban residential community character of this area. And then we have the list of permitted uses of the R1 zone listed here for council to review. So council does have a couple options in front of them tonight. Council gives second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3475, being a little bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to resume, rezone the aforementioned lands from R3 to R1, and then option two is for council to give a refusal, and if there is any reasons for the refusal, council has to provide that tonight. So staff is recommending that we move forward to option one, that council gives second and third reading for bylaw 2024-3475 to amend the zoning bylaw as mentioned above.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2024-3475, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020-3412, the zoning bylaw for the purpose of amending the land use designation of lots 1 through 18, Block 1, Plan 10319107, from residential multiple housing zone to residential detached zone. It'd be read a second time tonight. Second, I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion. Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Third bylaw. Right? Your worship, I would move the bylaw 2024-3475, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020-3412, the zoning bylaw for the purpose of amending the land use designation of lots 1 through 18, Block 1, Plan 102319107, from residential multiple housing zone to residential detached zone, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion. Go for the discussion. Called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. There's no unfinished business. New business, property sale, 7th Street Northwest. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So the city has received an offer to purchase from Ross Veterinary Services PC Limited, which are currently located at 416 7th Street Northwest for lots 11 through 26, Blocks 219, Plan T1166, being 1.1 acres, and a partial, and the partial lane, which is the lane ST L10, Plan T1166, it's extension zero, of 1.1 acres for a total of 1.2 acres. So the applicant is proposing to build a 9,000 square foot mixed animal veterinary clinic on the site to replace their existing facility. The land is zoned as a mixed-use district in which the veterinary clinic is discretionary use. The offer to purchase is $14,440 plus GST, which is the market price charged by the city, $12,000 per acre. The land is, and I have a mistake on this, it is currently advertised, and we have to bring this back because it's designated as municipal reserve. That's the reason that we have to bring that up for the act. So we have a location of the property. This property is just near the exhibition grounds on site.
Before you go there, where abouts on the, here's the chart.
Yeah, right where the orange is located. So if the sale is to move forward, the sale is contingent to the following conditions: successful approval of a discretionary use development permit in a mixed-use district, successful partial lane closure, as well through that procedure, which was brought back to council at a future date, consolidation and registration of lane and the two parcels at the cost of the purchaser, development of the veterinary clinic is required within two years, closing date of the agreement, the land is sold as is where is, meaning improvements, upgrades to Rose Service Utilities, now our infrastructure is to be the cost of purchaser, and then the city's standard sales agreement conditions would have to apply. So there is off-site development levies, which will be applicable separate from the purchase price, and that would be at $45,121.28 per acre, which is charged at the development stage, permit stage. So we have two options in front of council. One is approval of sale to Ross Veterinary Services PC Limited for the purchase price of $14,400 plus applicable GST, with the conditions listed above, and the city clerk would be authorized to sign the sales agreement. Option number two is to deny the sale, and then council would have to provide reasoning for the denial. So staff is recommending option one, which is council approval of the sale of the property and a portion of the lane to Ross Veterinary Services PC Limited for the purchase price offered of $14,400 plus applicable GST, subject to the conditions listed above.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the sale of lots 11 through 26, Block 219, Plan T1166, and a portion of lane ST L10, Plan T1166, extension zero, to Ross Veterinary Services PC Limited for the purchase price offered of $14,400 plus applicable GST, subject to the listed conditions be presented, be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Can you just bring that picture back down, Matthew?
Yes, my worship.
Yeah, we did. See, I was, I thought that that property that was supposed to be sold there, that we weren't going to sell that property because I think someone else acquired about that before, that that was supposed to be urban holdings, so in case they wanted to expand the tire bounds, we're in the doubt, changed, you know?
Knocked them aware of, your worship. No, this was reviewed by administration, so because it's a reserve area that we actually reached out to our departments. So I went through parks, engineering, planning developments, and we have no use for that. There was nothing that came up that way.
Okay, because I thought that, okay, maybe it's up closer to the highway. Is that that property up there that they, there was, wasn't somebody wanting to park up there?
Oh, somebody just called it.
To rent that, to park up there. Yeah, right. So maybe that's where I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, because I thought those were all there for, and then that other stuff below that, that is, that's still our holdings too, is it?
Yeah, that's where we are, our snow dump area is.
But that's, that's the part that they said that we wouldn't ever be selling it because that's our snow dump.
Yeah, that area is. We don't advertise that area for sale.
It's not big enough for a snow dump area, and we, we can't store anything that close to the highway there of value, so we, it's completely empty right now.
And the President Veterinary Clinic is straight back there, worship. Right? Any other discussion there? Do you have a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah. First off, thanks, worship. This is, I think this is awesome that they're doing this project. I encourage them. Matthew, I see the conditions, and they make good sense to me. Couple of questions. Condition number four, the development of a veterinary clinic is required within two years? That means beginning or ending within two years, the development?
It should be beginning.
Beginning within two years, thank you. Second is, you've gone through with the, with the buyer, the develop, the off-site development cost charge and what that will mean for them at 1.1 acres. They're fully understanding what all that means. Very good. Thank you.
Whenever we walk through a sales agreement, we make sure we go through all the processes and understand everything within that. And Christine does a great job. Welcome. And, uh, Christine does a great job, welcome.
Any, you have a question? Call the question, all in favor? Jerry, you have it. And, goodbye, uh, now, next one is a flag-raising question.
That's me again, Your Worship. Uh, so the city of Wayburn has received, um, a request for a flag-raising. Uh, so the city, uh, of Wayburn has a flag-raising policy that establishes guidelines for, uh, raising flags in front of City Hall. Uh, so we do have them, uh, now that are in front of our Senate House, right beside City Hall. Um, so a flag-raising request has been received from the Southeast Newcomer Services, uh, to have a flag-raising event on March twenty-first to promote Anti-Racism Day. Um, so within the policy, we made sure we reviewed, um, the application and made sure it fit back into our policy and meets the requirements of the policy as anti-racism day is recognized by the federal government. That is one of the statements that we have within that requirement for, uh, flag-raising. Uh, so what we have as a recommendation to council is that a council provide approval to the Southeast Newcomer Services, uh, request to have an anti-racism flag raised outside City Hall on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thanks, Your Worship, I'd make a motion that the request for Southeast Newcomer Services anti-racism flag, uh, being raised outside City Hall on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four be approved.
Worship, I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
Thanks, Your Worship, I think it's a great idea, that's what we did the installation for, and this meets all of our policy guidelines, so I think it's a great idea.
I'd just like to say that, like, we've got the vision of a community bylaw, we're supposed to be able to have a community bylaw. This one fits into it, but I still would like to review our flag policy because I kind of, uh, with the vision of a community bylaw, I feel that we should be more of a Switzerland sort of thing, not to get, get involved in any, a lot of stuff that is very controversial, and making sure that our, our flag-raising policy, I guess that's for later data, doesn't really apply to this one, but really is making sure that, uh, any flag really is not offensive to any other group outside of this one. Pretty non-opensive along the way that we're doing this.
Your Worship, uh, Manager Warren, will this be the first flag-raising, official flag-raising we've done at the new, um, poles in Santa Taff Park?
Uh, other than the day when we raise all the current flags, this will be our very first one.
That's what I mean, yes.
Yeah, so what happens is, is that we currently have on the fifth flag pole, is a Legion flag. Uh, that will come down, and we'll put this up for, for that period, for that event, but this will be the very first one.
Seems like an appropriate flag for that historic event, Your Worship.
Any more discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Jerry, you have it. Quires and announcements? I haven't a question, because I got, and some of the other counselors may have said that they got hit with this one too, but we may not want to speak up, but anyway, Jen, people were, there was people that were questioning why the downtown did not clean the snow. And my, we only had, this is the first major snow that we had, and it was, I know it was very inconvenient for us, but the snow has gone very quickly, but still, why was the city hall, oh, the downtown floor not cleaned? Like, that next morning?
So on the Sunday, we brought, uh, full crews in, uh, to do first priorities. Um, downtown is not a first priority, so our first priorities are our major highway connectors. Uh, so we had a full crew on that. Um, and then we did not go into the downtown until Tuesday morning because we needed the Monday for all of the sidewalks to get pushed into the street. We do allow that in the downtown-only area. And so, um, Monday morning, all of the contractors and everything were out pushing the sidewalks all into the street, as well as we sent our parks crew out in there, and they clean off all the other sidewalks, and they push it all out, and then we came in that Tuesday, kind of, well, parks came in at midnight, and then we came in, um, quite early on the Tuesday, and that way we were able to get all the snow out. Had we gone in any earlier, we would have had to just turn around and come back, um, because they would have pushed all the snow into the areas we'd already cleaned. So we do have to give a little bit of a window there, um, for the sidewalks to all get pushed into the roadway and get them all cleaned, so it's kind of a, um, it's a bit of a strategic thing that we have to do, that we don't come in and we don't clear all the snow out of the side because we do allow them to push all into the parking lane and stuff with their snow off the sidewalks, so. Um, we, um, on Monday, we're strictly on first priorities still because although we cleaned them Sunday, we had to come back and redo them on Monday with the snowfall continuing. So we got to the downtown, um, based on our exact timeline that we set out in our snow policy.
Anything else? The, uh, one last other thing, as you may have seen on the news, where Mayor Masters is, who is from China, is going to Normandy, uh, event in June sixth, in, over Normandy. It is the eightieth, uh, anniversary, if you want to call it the eightieth anniversary of the Normandy landing and the, uh, freedom of France, uh, for the Allies' invasion of occupied France. So I'm sure, uh, I've kind of talked to the, the Normandy people too, and maybe with, between the Legion and, and that, there might be a little bit more, uh, something going here. But it's, uh, quite interesting that they're going to have, uh, all five beaches, and I think there's going to be a live, you can tag into, uh, if you look up on, uh, the website, you'll be able to see that night when they have it, they'll be able to tag into the, the visual hub that they'll be filming, all five beaches will be shooting off fireworks, it'll be quite an event on that evening of that, so. And later to that, uh, day, or closer to that day, I'll, uh, keep you informed as to what is going on with that. Because it, it is a very historic date that a lot, as we, we set up flags out here on our, uh, live light standards to commemorate a lot of the World War, one of World War Two, uh, veterans that served from Wayburn area, this is a historic event, eighty years, at that point in time. Any other things that you, go ahead?
Thank you, Worship, actually, this just, uh, popped up as a reminder, um, the James Weir People's Choice, the voting actually closes on the fifteenth of March, so if you haven't had a chance to get over to the gallery and cast your vote, definitely do that. And then there's going to be an exhibition and evening event on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, all right. That being, and that starts at seven o'clock? That being said, there are no, uh, notices of motion, and we will call for adjournment.